Welcome everyone to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is June 12th, 2024. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building and is also being offered in a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting are provided as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, if you could please summarize any public comment received before tonight's meeting.
There was no additional public comment received between Monday evening and today.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This time, please join, stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection. Out of the servicemen and women, place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would entertain a motion dispensing. I bless you with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. It was written and recorded in the official minutebook of the township.
Take that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Commissioner Morris is on the streaming feature tonight, could not be in person with us. And I think that's it on that. I would like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its June 10th, 2024 workshop meeting to discuss two personnel matters and one real estate matter. And at this time, I will ask Commissioner Cobb to introduce our next agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the, the real pleasure of introducing a member of our community tonight who's going to do a brief presentation for the board and for the community at large. One of the things that's sort of a shame about modern life, out of a long list, but is our lack of any local newspapers. And I remember as a kid, how cool it was, particularly within little league season or baseball season, seeing, seeing a little blurb write up in the paper, getting your name in there. But stuff goes on in this township all the time, and we don't often get to hear about it very much, particularly very cool stuff that younger members of our community are doing. So tonight, I did invite Liam Baskin to join us, who recently was working on his citizenship in the community merit badge, had the opportunity to interview me. We had a discussion on it. And it's just a delightful young gentleman, and so wanted to hear more about his, his progress, what he's doing, and have him present that to the board. So Liam Baskin, welcome.
Thank you. So like you said, I'm Liam Baskin. I'm from Troop 177, right over here in Windmore at the Philadelphia First Church of the Brethren. This was my last merit badge I had to complete before I make this step for my Eagle project. Citizenship in the community is one of the required Eagle merit badges. And so what it's about is kind of how you should be a citizen in your community. There's three other citizenship merit badges, how you should be in the world and in the nation. But this one focuses on you as a citizen in your local environment. And so like how to, how to act in the community, how to get in contact with local representatives, and how to basically that. And as it, you have to like volunteer time or volunteer at a local organization. So what I did, I didn't necessarily do that. I volunteered my time by collecting items for the Wawa Volunteer Center at, down at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. Over the course, I think of about three months, I collected over 400 items of like coloring books and coloring utensils. And right after Christmas, I, over winter break, I went down and delivered them to, to the center. So for contacting a local representative, you had to, A, attend a meeting, which I attended a few over Zoom, and you had to speak with a member of local government about any local issues and how young people can get involved. So I contacted Commissioner Cobb, asked him a few questions, how he got involved with local government and how he feels about it. And local, any local issues, which one he said was about like making the community a little more accessible for everybody, such as sidewalks. And so, and lastly, I believe it, this, this is important because it shows you how you should be an active member of your community. With local issues that can affect you more personally than some stuff at a national level, but also anything you have concerns with, you can often get your voice heard and possibly persuade any decisions on a matter that you feel strongly about. So that is all I have prepared. If you have any questions, you can feel free to ask.
Thank you, Liam, very much. Have you decided yet or figured out what you're going to do for your, for your big project?
Um, yes, I am going to be cleaning up the front of the church where we attend our meetings at every Monday.
And how long will that take?
Um, hopefully not that long, hopefully only, um, because the total project has to be like around 16 hours of work.
Okay.
So I hope that it'll only take a two to three eight hour days to complete.
And can you enlist help, or do you have to?
Uh, yes, we, yes, I have to, I can enlist help from the troop family, friends, any neighbors, anybody else from the community that wants to help.
That's great.
Yep.
And, and you, when is your targeted date for Eagle?
Um, for the project, I have to complete that before I turn 18. So mid to late September is when I intend to start and, and finish that.
Okay.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Any other questions?
Hey, you're 17 now, Liam?
Yes, correct.
Right. In, in doing this, this work and teddy movies and stuff like that, any particular issues that have really piqued your interest that?
Um, nothing particularly. I think what Commissioner Cobb said in my interview with him over email, I think was a issue that could be addressed regarding, uh, you know, because not every street does have sidewalks. So I mean, that's accessibility can be an issue everywhere. So I think that's one thing that could definitely be addressed. So.
Great. Well, I commend you for, for taking this on.
Thank you.
It's, it's great.
Of course.
The more young people get involved, learn about this earlier.
Yeah.
It's better.
I think it'd be great.
And, and this gives us an opportunity not only to celebrate your accomplishments, which are tremendous, but also to highlight someone that hopefully is an inspiration to a lot of people to, to, you know, young or old, to get involved and to be a part of their community. Because I think, you know, again, as we discussed, that sort of that loss of community.
Exactly, yeah.
Is another big piece of everything. So you really are inspirational. So hopefully a lot of people that will see this will, will experience that too. Thank you, Liam.
Of course.
Thank you, Liam.
Very much.
Take care. Did you want to go out and see him now?
No.
That's okay. Yeah. All right. All right, great. Now, at this time, we will invite, invite, Voight, Joey Bergy, Vice Chair of the Springfield Township Advisory Commission, to discuss results of our energy saving analysis. And just for the record, originally Joy was scheduled to be on our agenda for Monday night, and she graciously agreed to come back tonight because we had some issues that we knew we were time constrained, would take some. So thank you for that, Joy.
Uh, my pleasure. And I'm no longer Vice Chair of EAC, just a regular old member of EAC.
We'll resend that comment.
And it's so impressive, you know, the kids in Springfield. Just want to let you know, I think you probably all know this, but the EAC has a formal working relationship with a high school sustainability club. We meet monthly. We've been doing, doing this for two years ongoing. We occasionally work with the STEM Club. Amazing kids. Our changing of the guard meeting is August 19th in the library, when the current graduating co-presidents will turn the reins over to the incoming co-presidents. So they're, they're fabulous. So thank you so much for letting me be here tonight. Thanks to all the commissioners. Thank you to Representative, Representative Commissioner May for filling the big shoes of Peter Wilson. Thanks to the staff.
Is your, is your mic on?
Is, is that?
There we go.
Woo.
Up, just, up close and personal. Okay. So thanks to the commissioners. Thank you to
the staff for providing so much of this data. Mike, and there's Mike. Gene Irvin, our fleet manager, has provided a lot of this data. And Craig Lloyd. Also, thank you to Pat Hines, who's the data guy who crunches all the numbers, and without him, I would be lost. So if you have questions, we will, we may get them, we may need to get the answers from Pat. So, okay, next slide, please, Craig. Just to rehash, this is part of our renewable Springfield plan. The commissioners made the commitment, passed a resolution in 2019, that our municipal operations, our building and our fleet would be powered by 100% full electricity by 2035, 100% fleet and building heat by 2050. So we're making good progress on this. So proud of Springfield. We were the first in Montgomery County to do this. I think there are now 22 municipalities who have made this commitment. We're ahead of everybody. Maybe Lower Marion's get close, but we'll see. So there are three efforts that I want to report on tonight. Making the buildings more efficient, those were the result of our energy audits, that's heat, electricity, the street light upgrades to LEDs. And Craig, you presented this data, I think in December. So interesting. So we've incorporated that into these reports as well. And also converting the fleet to hybrids, police cruisers first. So I want to make, before we dig into the data, Pat and I have had to make some assumptions for this data, and we've tried to be conservative in every case, so that we're, we're understating, if anything. At least that's what our intentions are. For the building data, we're ignoring 2020. That, remember that pandemic thing? So there were surely savings that year, but what were due to the pandemic, the buildings were closed, and what was due to the, you know, the changes to the H-tracks, we're just going to ignore that. So let's start with the admin building, Craig, if you would go to the next slide. And we're going, I'm going to show you two sets of bar charts. I show you dozens, but I won't. So this is looking at the admin police building at our electricity use over the course of four years, 2019 through 24, is displayed here. Again, no 2022. And the tall, for each month, you can see this, there's a set of either four or five bars, depending on how far into the, the year we are. So the leftmost bars in each cluster of bars is 2019. And you can see that in every case, that is larger. There is more electricity used in the months in 2019 than in any of the subsequent years. This was in 2019 is when we did the energy audits on these three buildings and started implementing the changes. And we, we saw changes immediately. So electricity, of course, is used for lights and equipment and air conditioning. So electricity usage is always going to peak in the summer months. Let's go next, please, Craig, to the same set of data, but for natural gas used in these, in the, in the, this building, the admin police building. Natural gas, of course, is just used for heat. So it's always going to peak in the, you know, in the winter months. Again, big savings, 34% average. I didn't mention on the last one, we don't need to back up. 25% average savings and reduction in electricity. Natural gas is 34, even larger than that. Now, and the bottom there, Pat just pulled out some numbers. One, let's just compare two years, 2019 to 2023, 43,000 combined savings, just in this building, on electricity and gas. Now, I've shown you these two bar charts. In every case but one, the leftmost bar, the before bar, the 2019 bar, was much higher than every other month. There's one exception. Look at January, look at the first one there, and you see that the green bar, which was January 2022, is almost as tall. Like, what the heck was that about? So Public Works dug into it, and what they found was that there was one room in this building in 2022 where the sensor was broken, the heat sensor was broken, and the heat was on 24/7 for a month. And that's what happened. So actually, I believe Public Works used this chart as a diagnostic to say, need to look, need to look for that. And they found it. So got a lot of good data out of this diagnostic value as well. By the way, I was, I, I serve as the co-chair for the Sustainability and Advisory Committee at the county level for the couple of the new commissioners. And I shared this wonderful case study with them in March. They were impressed. I said, we ought to be doing energy audits on one Montgomery Plaza. But the room that we happened to be in then, that, for that presentation in March was really hot. It was about 80 degrees. And it was commented by someone at that level that maybe they needed to do one of these, maybe they had a sensor that was broken. So anyway, the county knows about our good work here. Let's go to the next slide, please, Craig. And this is just a summary. There's the three buildings, admin, library, and public works, and what we've saved in all three of them over the years. This is just through 2023, not looking at 2024. You'll notice the library usage is up a bit in 2023. And we're, part of that was a problem that I think we fixed, I think's been fixed. But I don't know if there was another problem there. Anyway, looking at these are very useful. The numbers on the right. So over $250,000 is what we've saved so far. You know, that's, that's real money. There's the three years. That's not including 2020 or 2024. The currency that matters more to me is that over 659,000 pounds of carbon dioxide has been avoided. And that's the primary greenhouse gas for climate change. So really significant savings. So thank you all for supporting this. Oh, and what did it cost to do the energy audits? We started with benchmarking. We did summer energy audit, winter energy audit, called in the HVAC contractor to make all the tweaks, and it was $11,000. So good rate on return. Okay, um, next slide, please, Craig. So I want to give you progress to date on the other two efforts, the fleet conversion. Remember, we started replacing the police cruisers with hybrids in 2021. The goal is eventually to get to, what, all 40? We have 40 vehicles in the fleet, I think, Mike, something like that.
Something like that.
To get them all to 100% electric. And, you know, we'll, we'll make reasonable progress on that. And again, what's new tonight is that I have streetlight data to share with you, thanks to Pat's efforts. So let us go to the table, if we can, with all the numbers on it that are a bit hard to see. Slide seven. And I think you all got copies of this in your books. Um, there we go. So we took the three, the three projects and figured out the annual savings, the savings over three years, also carbon dioxide avoided. So number one, or number A, savings resulted from energy audits. We just saw that. That's the $250,000. And we estimate that the ongoing annual savings will be $90,000 a year as a result of doing the energy audits and making the changes. You know, lots of places do energy audits, but then the results go up on the shelf. We made the changes. So bravo to the staff for jumping on it. The savings from police hybrids. Now, here's where there's an assumption. And we're looking at, we've normalized the numbers. So we're looking at 2021 to 2023. Pat, correct me if I'm wrong here. Now, we assumed four hybrid vehicles for, in the fleet for, for those three years. We had a little trouble figuring out exactly how many hybrids were, were in there each month. We can't figure out that data. Maybe you all want Mike and Jean to go back and dig a little deeper. But basically, assuming there have been four, and we think that's conservative, we've saved $51,000. And again, saved a whole bunch of, avoided a whole bunch of CO2.
Joy, does that savings include the upfront extra cost of those vehicles?
It does. So they cost more, it costs more to buy a hybrid than a regular, you know, that there's more technology. But it looks like we recovered the savings in the first year. That includes gas. I mean, I, you, you kind of, I don't know if it's in half the ghi-cha-cha gas, but a lot.
Joy, just, just refresh me.
Because I thought that Ford was no longer making anything except hybrids for the police interceptors.
Well, Mike, you want to speak to this? Because there's been some battery glitches, and there's been supply chain problems, right?
Yeah, that's correct. The Ford is in the middle of re-tolling the, the interceptor or Explorer SUV. And as a result of that re-tolling, they've suspended the production of hybrid vehicles for the moment.
Okay.
Or on the police side. So we anticipate they'll be available either late this year or early next year.
Okay.
But there's none available for this model year. But beyond that, there was never an all-electric police SUV.
No, 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 I know that. Yes, yes, yes. So have we suspended our, our acquisition of cruisers until?
We were scheduled to buy one this year. It's a detective's vehicle, and the cars that we have are not in horrible shape. So we're limping through, so to speak.
Okay.
Until they're available next year. If they don't become available in the first quarter of next year.
Yeah.
You know, you're a year over when you're supposed to replace it. So, you know, we may have to revisit that. But for the moment, we're kind of holding on.
And there's an issue with replacing batteries, too.
So we've, we had earlier this year, well, earlier this month, we had three of the hybrids down at the same time for battery replacements. Since then, I know that at least one has been put back into service. But the delay is, it's not as simple as changing a car battery under your hood. They have to drain the system. They have to remove this thing physically with nuts and bolts. And they had to, they don't stock them on the shelf. So they had to order them in. So we're getting them back in service.
And we're finding.
Warranty issue.
We purchased, we purchased an extended warranty for the hybrid vehicles because each battery replacement of a hybrid is $2,500 a piece.
Right.
With the extended warranty, it's $100 deductible, so long it's within the first five years and 100,000 miles.
And, and Mike, I forget if it was you or Jean said that this is what's being found, is that the batteries in the police cruisers go down much faster, which is, you know, they live a different life than, you know, regular cars. So.
And the, and the technology will continue to evolve and improve over time.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So anyway, this, this is like, these are kind of the assumptions. This is why we said, well, let's assume there's been four hybrids on the road full-time for three years. Again, if you want to go back and reconfigure that, Mike, you know.
Maybe the, the, the periods, the dates of introduction for each of the vehicles.
Do we have that, Pat? But anyway, I, I think, yes, you did. And I, you know, for purposes of, for, you know, assumptions.
The cars enter service at different periods of time.
Right.
You don't want to replace your entire fleet at one time.
Right, exactly.
Because it goes bad all at one time. So.
Right. And interestingly, about the price differential, I mentioned it's now $4,000. When we started this in 2021, they were five, it was a $5,000 differential. So again, to speak to the issue of technology. So that's the hybrids. And then, this is the really cool thing with the streetlight conversions. This is the data that Craig shared with everybody in December. We, you replaced all of the lights in 2017, or it was over some period, I guess, a rolling period, the streetlights?
Most of the Cobra heads were all done within one year's time.
Okay, okay.
Some of the ornamentals, which were very few in number, were done in-house the following year. But the big savings is in the Cobra heads.
Right, right. And, and big savings indeed, 149,000 dollars in savings, a lot of CO2 avoided, almost 4 million pounds of KWH reductions. Craig gave us the KWH reductions, and Pat did the conversions from KWH to CO2. Now, that costs something, right? That wasn't like the hybrids that cost almost nothing, or the energy audits that cost almost nothing. But still in all, you know, good numbers. So you look there at the bottom, total savings, we've saved $450,000 because of these. Money we never had to spend, almost 6 million pounds in CO2. Estimated ongoing savings, assuming this all stays good, $142,000. So real money and real environmental benefit. I mean, like, what's not to like in these numbers? Let's have one wrap up. But any questions on all the data? So far so good? Okay, excellent. So let's wrap up with the final slide, Craig. So what's, what's next? As you know, we're exploring solar on this building and public works across the street. You guys have the feasibility study. Bear in mind, Ron Salantano's estimate, we're out of pocket, once we get the government 30% rebate, rebate is $671,000, I think would be the cost. And we have not spent $450,000 in the last three years. So I know we didn't put that money in a, you know, in a cookie jar. But all things considered, you know, there's, we've really cut down our spending. So I hope that you'll, you'll do that. I know Ron will come back at another date to talk about that. We're exploring electrical landscaping equipment. Ian Hammer's all over that. Again, we're aiming for conversion of the full fleet, first the hybrids and then electric. The technology may let us skip the hybrid stage at some building. And I just want to mention, and Jim and Suzie and Ed have heard me say this before, because we're in the Rec Center Advisory Committee, it would be a wonderful thing to make the Rec Center a net zero building, meaning no net carbon emissions, you know, no fossil fuels, solar on the roof, heat pumps, and geothermal, if we can do it. You know, that has to be tested. But it would be great for Springfield to do that. So that's my pitch. How'd they do, Pat? I mean, I stayed right numbers. Questions? Thank you so very, very much. Really so proud of.
Thank you, Julie.
So proud of Springfield for doing this.
Definitely something to be proud of. Thank you. Okay, at this time, the board is now open to comments and questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. To conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item now, right now, would be the appropriate time. How many people do we have online, Craig? Great. Okay, thank you. We have three. Okay, hearing no public comment, we will now enter our committee reports. And I will begin. I have two items this morning, this morning. I've drank it before this meeting. Oh, this evening. First, I move that the Board of Commissioners extend a conditional offer of employment to Eunice Bujita of CKN PA as a probationary police officer with the Springfield Township Police Department, effective July 1st, 2024. Condition of employment is successfully, excuse me, the condition of employment is successfully passing a physical and psychological examination. Mr. Bujita is a graduate of the Delaware County Police Academy and is presently employed as a part-time officer to Fullcroft and Norwood Borough Police Departments. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Second item is regarding parking regulations on Lorraine Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section 107-33 Schedule X, Parking Time Limited, by repealing the existing time limited parking restriction on North Side, Lorraine Avenue, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, from a point 280 feet on the northwest corner of Aaronport Avenue to a point 370 feet west, southwesterly thereof. Springfield Township Traffic Safety Officer has reviewed the existing parking conditions and determined that they are no longer necessary. So that is my motion. Is there a second? Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. And that concludes, concludes my report. And we will now go to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two resolutions and a notice. My first resolution is number 1642, Springfield Township Middle School. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1642, a resolution granting preliminary slash final land development approval for the Springfield Township Middle School, 1901 Paper Mill Road, Orland. The subject of the plan is the construction of 25,000 square feet of new building additions, including a new auditorium, as well as renovations to the school administration offices, cafeteria and kitchen. As part of the renovations, the main entrance will be located from the east side of the building to the north rear side of the building. Additional improvements include vehicular and pedestrian improvements, a retaining wall, landscaping and stormwater management facilities. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
The only comment I want to make is, as, as a member of the planning commission, I sat through the presentation of the school board for this, for these additions to the, to the middle school. And my only comment here, and I hope we all realize this and, and feel it's still appropriate, is that this, this addition is now going to be 35 feet from Route 3, the, the right of way to Route 30309, which is a very, very busy, obviously very, very busy, major limited access state highway. The majority of the addition here is going to be the new auditorium. And again, it's going to be 35 feet from the roadway. So I, I questioned at the planning meeting whether there were any restrictions that PennDOT had on, on placing, you know, basically, you know, kids within 35 feet of a major superhighway. And they assured me there were none. There were no, no restrictions. And that, that they felt it was still very doable and a safe situation. So I'm not going to vote in favor of this because I think it's a bad idea to put, you know, middle schoolers within 35 feet of a major interstate highway. So that's my only comment.
And Pete, remind me, there's not sound barriers there. It's just a guardrail.
There's nothing. It's, they're actually going to be making a retaining wall. So if, so if somebody loses it on the entrance ramp, it's gonna, they're gonna quickly fall over the retaining wall into the building. And potentially, I mean, you know.
Did anyone else at Planning Echo, you're concerned?
No, I was the only one.
Any other questions or comments? Right, we vote a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Nay. My second resolution, which I'm pleased to put forward, and I will be supporting, is Resolution 1643, the towns at Pennybrook. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1643, a resolution granting preliminary slash final land development approval for the towns of Pennybrook, Subdivision slash Land Development Plan 380 slash 402 Hoz Lane Erdenheim. The subject of the plan is the construction of a 16-unit townhouse development on two tracts of land measuring 2.03 acres. In addition to the construction of the 16 townhomes, the plan requires the developer to construct a driveway, parking area, and walking trail through the adjacent township-owned parcel, and to the over, and to oversize the stormwater detention facilities on the townhouse track to reduce stormwater runoff from the site. The developer has also agreed to place an, an all-way stop-controlled intersection for the Hoz Lane slash Green Hill Road slash Park driveway intersection upon the completion of the park improvements. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
My, my only comment here is, you know, we're all familiar with this, this development and the many years that we have been discussing it. I, and, and the numerous community meetings that were held here, some, some too very late at night. But I, I think that what we have here is a very, very good plan. It was made better by the community and, and by the community's involvement. And I am strongly in favor of it.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
So my last notice is, is an amusement device ordinance amendment. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amending the Springfield Township Code, Chapter 4, Amusement Devices, to amend the definition of amusement devices and Chapter 114 zoning, Article 2 definitions, to add the term of definition of amusement device to, to, to further amendment, Article 9, S Shopping Center, is that nine?
11.
11, I'm sorry. Yes, Roman numerals are off. Yeah. S Shopping Center District, to amend amusement device, to add amusement device as a permitted use, and to further amend Article 10 B2 Business District, to add amusement device as a permitted use when authorized as a special exception and subject to additional requirements. The board will conduct a public meeting on and may vote to adopt the above referenced ordinance at its meeting on July 10, 2024, at 7:30 PM at the Springfield Township Building. That is my notice. And that concludes my reports.
And we don't take a vote on that, right?
You do take a vote on that.
We do.
You voted to authorize advertisement.
Gotcha. Okay. So we do have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Are, are we good on time with voting on that on July 10?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We will now go to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, regarding the bill listing, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the May check reconciliation, the amount of $1,942,751.59, and the June bill listing in the amount of $1,097,811.89. That's my motion.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
And regarding the zoning hearing board meeting for the month of June, the Springfield Township zoning hearing board will meet on Monday, June 24 at 7:00 PM in this building, where they'll hear the following two applications. The first is the application of Rose Lane Holding LLC. Owners of the property located at 1300 Rose Lane in Flower Town. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the 24-square-foot non-illuminated monument sign to remain as currently installed along the Rose Lane frontage of the property. The sign is replaced in approximately six-square-foot freestanding sign at the site. That property is owned within the C Residential District of Ward 1. They will also hear the application of Five Star Venture 1 Limited Partnership. Owner of the property is located at 901,000 East Mermaid Lane in Windmore. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the properties to be used for indoor pickleball courts. In addition, a variance has been requested to allow for a reduction in the required onsite parking. The applicant is proposing 44 off-street parking stalls and has submitted a parking demand study for review. Those properties are zoned within the Limited Industrial District of Ward 5 in Springfield Township. Copies of the application packets are reviewed in the Community Development Office during normal business hours. And again, those two applications will be heard on Monday, June 24 at 7 o'clock. And that is my announcement in my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will now go to the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Retzavon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two announcements and some remarks. First, for Flag Day, please announce that the Arthur V Savage American Legion Post of Windmore, I say, I will announce that the Arthur V Savage American Legion Post of Windmore will be conducting a flag retirement ceremony in conjunction with Flag Day on Friday, June 14, 2024, at Veterans Park. The ceremony will be conducted at 5:00 PM at the Veterans Memorial in the 900 block of Willow Grove Avenue in Windmore. Also, we'd like to announce that we were recently informed, right before this meeting, of the resignation of one Carrie Bocella, Chair of our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. She has been an invaluable member of our committee, not just in my time here, but it sounds like for many years. We couldn't exactly get the number before the meeting, but she has also been an excellent mentor to me, and we wish her well. And thereby, there will be created a vacancy at the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. One more remaining item, you know, Monday, we had a packed room. Sometimes you can't tell on the videos, which you can reference now. Thank you, Jim, for suggesting that we can reference Monday's video immediately posted now. It was a packed room, plus I think upwards of 60-some on Zoom at some point in time. And so I wanted to provide summary for those community members who may not have understood or maybe been knowledgeable what that was about. So on Monday, there was a lengthy discussion about a bullying incident in local baseball that rose to scrutiny. While this has been going on since a plane with a parent's name on it was flown and witnessed at the ballfields on May 18, and arguably began before that, most residents in the township will have not heard about it until Monday's workshop discussion and may be wondering why and how the township is involved. If you have any further inquiry on that discussion, the video from Monday is readily available. After the Little League's lack of serious response in addressing what many believe to be an attempt at public humiliation, outraged community members wished to come and did go to our regular Park and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting to discuss their experiences with the litany of fear and intimidation tactics they believe are being used by a member or members of the Little League Board to quiet their voices. And this ultimately hurt these families by stealing their experience with the sport in this community and this township, let alone the mental health toll it took on them. Why is this related to our township? We even heard someone ask, you know, is there something there or there? And I want to clarify that, yes, it's absolutely imperative to address the disease of bullying and intimidation of our community members by our special partner organizations. In this situation, the Little League has the privilege to use our public asset. And as I understand it, we've historically had no issue with this and largely love it. This privilege, though, does come with responsibilities, which we have laid out in a land use agreement, the most recent being up for renewal at the end of December. It's definitely a priority by the committee members after hearing those remarks on Wednesday to reevaluate how we can do better in that agreement moving forward, as well as reviewing some compliance inquiries. The committee and staff wish to reflect that bullying and intimidation has no place in the department. For committee members, it was clear that the plane incident rose to that level regardless of what the response was. Since then, the local Little League has issued a statement where they conducted an investigation consisting of asking each other and asking people at the ballfields. As far as we know, that is the extent of the investigation. I can, you know, per them on Monday. I can say definitively that this is deficient, and their handling of this has eroded some trust and confidence among Park and Rec Committee members, certainly as well as our fellow board members. We have urged them, and I know my fellow commissioners continue to urge them, to take this more seriously and take, and consider some more serious actions. Relatedly, we heard a lot about approachability as a combatant of intimidation. And I just want to say that this isn't just about approachability, but accountability. And the reason we unfortunately had to have this discussion in, you know, the bright lights of this public meeting was because it was not being handled with the respect and attention it deserved. I think that providing safe, healthy, inclusive spaces is paramount in parks and recreation, but also with, with government. And bullying and intimidation defies these goals. Toward those goals, we as commissioners can also provide safe place for healthy dialogue. And then as a reminder, any member of the public should feel comfortable coming to us as public officials to help bring to light issues of concern. Even if not directly, you should know that this is a safe place to come and provide public comment and be heard with fairness. All will always be welcome. That concludes my comments on the events of Monday. And so concludes my report unless someone has commented.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Retzavon. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will begin with the recycling report, which is actually an exciting one. You know, as exciting as a recycling report can be. But during the month of May, Springfield Township residents recycled 190.2 tons of material with a householder participation rate of 73.8%. The net cost for the month was $14,501.01. And I think we'll notice that that's a dramatic drop in the cost of this recycling. And there has been an adjustment to the, the charges that are being made to, to handle the recycling. And it's been my understanding that a lot of that goes to the credit of our township residents for putting out very clean and, you know, appropriate recyclables in their containers so that, you know, the sorting process and everything else that goes along with the processing of recyclable materials is done in a much more efficient manner. So I do want to thank all our township residents for being so mindful. And, you know, it's leading to actual, real savings for, for all of us here in the township. I additionally would like to remind residents to locate the refuse and recyclable materials a suitable distance from one another and to clearly label the containers so that they are easily identified by the proper collection crew. Unmarked recycling containers that are located too close to refuse containers and/or contain unsuitable materials would be treated as refuse and disposed of accordingly. Therefore, please locate your refuse, single-stream recyclables and yard waste materials apart from one another so that they are easily identified and properly disposed, which, you know, it seems that our township residents are doing, given our, our drop in, in cost. The second item is regarding the Environmental Advisory Commission. I have a motion here. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Gail Farmer and Aaron Steppelwitz to new three-year terms of service as members of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. Ms. Farmers and Mr. Steppelwitz's new terms of service shall expire June 14, 2027. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
Great. And further, the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission promotes education and provides recommendations to the Board of Commissioners about issues relating to the management, use and protection of our local environment. Anyone interested in serving as a member of the AAC is encouraged to submit a letter of interest or resume to Michael Taylor, Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Windmore, PA, or via email to M. Taylor at SpringfieldMonco.org. We do have a, a opening for a full member of the AAC that we would be looking to fill. And so we would look for anybody who's currently an associate member or just a prospective member to, to please apply there. It's an incredible group. If anybody is, you know, still paying attention online or looking at this video later, you know, you'll have noticed Joy Bergy's presentation tonight. And I find that incredibly compelling. Just they, they have big dreams, but they're also able to make these dreams a reality and save the township money and save the environment a whole lot of pollutants. And so it's a, it's a great group to be a part of, and I would recommend it to anybody.
Sounds like it's joyful.
Yeah. Always when Joyce there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner May. We'll now go to the Chairwoman of the- We'll now go to the Chairwoman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner McNamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are two items this evening. The first is the Black Horse Inn Multiple Listing Contract. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Township Manager to execute an extension to the existing listing agreement with Dan Hallwick Incorporated to market and secure tenants for office suites B and F at the Black Horse Inn, 1432 Bethan Pike in Flower Town. Pursuant of the terms of the agreement, Dan Hallwick Realtors shall serve as the township's broker and agent and shall receive compensation during the term of the agreement in an amount equal to one month's rent per unit, which shall be shared with any cooperating broker pursuant to the terms of the agreement. The agreement shall expire September 30th, 2024. That is my motion.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a six zero vote.
Okay, the second is regarding the Public Works Collective Bargaining Agreement. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to execute an employment contract with Springfield Township Public Works Department for the years 2024 through 2027. The amendments to the existing contract are wage adjustments, vacation agreement leaves, observance of the Juneteenth holiday, work shoot reimbursement and signing bonus. In addition, a new graduated wage and vacation schedule will be introduced for individuals from hired after January 1st, 2024. That is my motion.
And a motion, is there a second? Questions or comments?
Just a point of clarification, this is, this agreement will be retroactive to the beginning of the year.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any others?
Just a comment that on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we would like to thank the members of the Public Works Department for their service to the township and also for their willingness to work with the township to counter the agreement of this contract.
Great, thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a six zero vote.
I have one final announcement, which is as a result of this new agreement, there will be no refuse or recycling collection on Wednesday, June 19th. Households located on both the Wednesday and Thursday collection routes should place their materials at the curb for collection no later than 7:00 AM on Thursday, June 20th, for collection later that day.
Great.
And that concludes my report this evening.
All right. And Commissioner McNamara, you are also handling an item for Commissioner Morris.
I am able to do it if you guys like.
Yes.
It is my fir-, it is my first speaking part in a while.
All right, go for it, Commissioner Morris.
Can everyone hear me loud and clear?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The Friends of the Library will be conducting their annual book sale on Saturday, June 15th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Free Library of Springfield Township, 8911 Hawthorne Lane, Our Fair, Windmore. A variety of pre- enjoyed, i.e. used, books will be available, including fiction, nonfiction, children and young adult titles. Hard copies will be offered for $1, while paper books are just a mere 50 cents. All proceeds will benefit the Free Library of Springfield Township. You may wish, and if you wish, you make an announcement regarding the book sale part of your committee report, if you like, on June 12th, 2024. That is all I have for my announcement.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. And you'd be happy to know that you sound like the great Oz.
Yeah.
On the curtain.
Well, I, I was shooting for the Oz and I am behind a curtain.
Um, you, you, okay. That concludes our committee reports this evening. The board is once again open to receiving public comment. And just to reiterate what Commissioner Ratzavon said, our workshop meetings are now available also on our website, which we'll then link to our YouTube page that has the meetings. So if people do want to check out Monday's meeting, they can go right to their website and access that. And we also decided, which is probably our most important decision, that June, July and August, we'd have a relaxed, informal, business casual dress code for our meetings. And that's that. So we are open for public comment. And it doesn't sound like we have any, so if no one has any other comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I, Mr., this is Commissioner Morris, and I would just want to say that Solicitor Garrity looks especially dashing in his dress down attire. I never thought I'd see it, but now that I have, I can't unsee it.
Well said. All right, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a six zero vote. And we are done.